I'll order the city of Columbia, a city council meeting of June seventh, twenty twenty-two. I'd like to start the meeting by asking again to give the invocation on all rise and join together with the Pledge of Allegiance for the flag.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interests of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have me to call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tutilio? Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the, uh, meeting minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and also the minutes of the special meeting held on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any adjustments or corrections those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. We received a letter from Marty Knowles to request permission to hold their annual street party on North Elm Street on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two from four-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. She's had that meeting before. And we have that, uh, item under new business. If that's okay, we'll just, we'll vote on it at that time. Next on reports of commissions and boards, you received a copy of the Park Recreation Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. Uh, next item of business is our rec- recognition of persons desiring to appeal appear. We have Crystal Sambida Boggs to discuss the sunset, sunset dip five K race on July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Hello. All right, we're putting on another event. Uh, this one here is actually, uh, going to take place in Firestone Park. Uh, we love our park. It does go out on Springfield Road, a little bit on East Park Avenue. It's a different course than we've used in the past. The whole point of the race, it's a dusky evening race, and when they finish, they get to have a pool party afterwards. The point in having the race is to raise funds for the park and the pool specifically. We, um, anybody that follows social media sees everybody blasting about how the park has raised rates and this, that, and everything, and complaining about the stuff. And we all know that the pool definitely needs some money. So we're kind of trying to do our part to give back to the, uh, community that supports us and lets us do all of our stuff that we like doing. So that's the intent of it. The event is on Thursday night to avoid the, uh, busyness of the park in the summer on the weekend. So it's July, uh, I wrote seventeen, um, sorry, on my notes, twenty-first, sorry. Um, six o'clock packet pickup time. We'll be using the, uh, pool facilities for that. At seven o'clock race time, eight o'clock for the pool party itself, since that's the new pool party time. Uh, we have our insurance. I left a message with the auxiliary. Uh, the park had a special meeting for me so we can get the dates, because I had round two of COVID during the last, uh, park board meeting. So we're playing catch-up and getting everything done all at once here. So, any questions?
Is this sponsored by the charitable?
Yes. Yes.
So you have arrangements to have lifeguards at the pool party, I assume?
Yeah, it'll be, that's a requirement of the pool and stuff, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure you talked to Chief about.
Briefly tonight, yes. Uh, we are literally putting this together like today.
Any other questions for Crystal? Anyone want to entertain a motion to approve this?
I move that we approve the request to have the race in the park and.
Second.
Second? Discussion? Do you have me to call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have Asha Gregory, Marketing Director and Special Project Manager for JSOFC Camel and Company and Moxie Events to discuss a whole event on Main Street and question the door.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
I am Asha Gregory. I am with, uh, JSOFC Camel and Company and Moxie Events out of Trumbull County. Um, I'm here to propose an event that we would like to take place right here on your beautiful Main Street. Um, I'm just going to read over our proposal event idea. Um, we invite you to join us for an event like none other in this historical jewel of our county downtown Columbia. Moxie Events presents Dinner on Main Street, a charming event featuring a unique dining experience in the heart of downtown. So guests will be seated at white linen-covered tables with fresh flowers and candles, which will line the center of Main Street in front of the TG Real Estate, um, block. They'll be treated to great food, live music, and a bit of history and folklore, followed by dancing in the streets. Dinners on Main Street are going to be taking place throughout the Mahoning Valley during the months of August, September, and October. We will be selling tickets, uh, utilizing the Moxie Events website. Um, a link will also be provided that you can be, you can utilize on your city's website as well and social media. Ten dollars from each ticket purchased will go towards downtown Columbia revitalization. So we will be giving back to your community. It'd be a great privilege for us to host one here in Columbia. Um, a perpo- the event will take place, we're hoping, on Friday, August fifth, to coincide with your First Fridays. A proposed itinerary for the evening will include six o'clock appetizers and cocktails, six-thirty the dinner will commence, followed by performances. Um, the plan for dinner also will be to use a local restaurant to cater the event. So they will also get publicity from this. At eight o'clock, there'll be live music and dancing. Um, there was also a discussion of teaming up with the Main Street Theater and doing a dinner and a movie. So they would have dinner, have dancing, and then they would be able to walk down to the theater and have a movie with them as well. Do you have any questions for?
Rain date?
I'm sorry?
Rain date?
Yes, there will be a rain date. Hopefully the following Friday. Yeah. Yes, we always have a rain date with any of our events for Moxie.
I do have a question about the door for you. The way our door works, and in general, the way doors work, is that, uh, drinks have to be served by the, uh, participating restaurants, bars, whatever.
Okay.
And as of right now, I think the only two that we have in the door area are, uh, the, uh, obviously birdfish brewing. Yeah. And then the, uh, uh, I think the pizza place still has.
Yes, ours pizza does, yes.
Okay.
So that, that's, that could be complicating, because I, I don't know about ours pizza, but I know that birdfish does not serve anything other than beer.
Right.
So.
Okay. Um, that is something we will take under consideration, and we'll have to, this is all very much in the starting stages. Um, so that is something that we will have to revisit then.
How, how is this going to work with the First Friday event?
Um, well, I was under the, um, assumption that the First Friday events take place, well, obviously the First Friday of every month. Um, and we would just coincide that and mark off our area to have the dinner.
Were you thinking about having the dinner? Did you mention that?
In front of the, the block that, um, has TG Real Estate and auto mortgage. And I think there's a hair salon there too. Yeah.
Yeah, so we would, I have a meeting with Danny of the, uh, chamber on Wednesday. We could talk a little bit more about that and see if we can fit you in there at the same time. Because right now there was a bounce house in that general vicinity.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
But, um, there was a pretty good section there along, along TG. You know, I'm not sure how many feet you're going to need, but, uh.
We were not, we were maxing out the guests at anywhere from fifty to seventy-five.
Okay.
Um, so it'd be twenty-five people on each side of the table. Yeah, something different.
What's the, uh, typical cost?
So for this, we have not come up with a cost, um, just yet. Our Moxie events, depending on what they are, um, usually include, so I'll tell you a little bit about Moxie events. Um, we're based out of Trumbull County in downtown Warren. We do anything for murder mysteries. We bring in live music groups. We do themed dinners. We do, like, right now, our big thing is our Yellowstone Dinner Night. We have courses that take people around the barn. We have trivia, stuff like that. Those ticket prices include a buffet and also usually like a swag bag. Those run from sixty-five to seventy-five dollars. This would probably be a little bit lower than that.
And you are working with the theater crew?
That's our hope, yes, yes.
Yeah, my only concern would be how this is going to mesh up with, with, with First Friday, because that,
Okay.
First Friday's, especially if there's a lot of kids down there, it's going to get a little rowdy running around and.
Right.
I'm not sure how that goes with the formal dinner.
Okay.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I think it'd be fun to, to do it. I mean, it's, it sounds very interesting.
Yeah, I, I, I think there probably a lot of details that still need to be worked out.
Yes.
Well, that's an August date. Am I correct?
Yes.
So you have, you have a, something slightly under two months?
Yes.
To be able to get all the, uh, the bugs worked out of the system?
Yes, correct. We gave ourselves plenty of planning time, um, also because we haven't done events in Columbia County before. So this is our first time being.
I'd hate to approve it until we see some of those things worked out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's a great idea. I, uh.
Nothing, nothing against it. It's just that it's, it's.
Still needing all the details worked out.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand.
And making sure that it's going to work to coincide with the First Friday, because I don't want to feel like we're trying to overtake someone else's, you know, events that have already been planned and decided on. And, and if it didn't work, then we can discuss another date to just have that, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's a neat concept.
Yeah, I think it's a great concept.
Oh, yeah.
And I think if the date doesn't work, we can find another date for you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we can do.
Second Fridays.
I'm aiming for second Fridays. That was sweet. Okay.
Really interesting idea. Our sit-fifty old people in a bounce house.
We do have a, uh, council meeting on the twenty-first, so, and I, I mean, if you want to come down here around nine-thirty, ten o'clock on Wednesday, I'm sure we can meet with, um, Danny Edgerton that, I mean, her and I have a meeting, so.
Okay.
If you want to, or we could call you, either way. Yeah, because believe it or not, yes, that is tomorrow. Yep.
I'll probably be on a call this week.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Yep, that'll, that'll work.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
I'm going to move to the, uh, manager's report. Now, Lance, to give his, uh, city manager update.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. You may have read in the paper that our great news, our CDVG application to the county commissioners was approved. So, uh, we'll be getting sixty-five thousand, uh, and some change from CDVG, another thirty-four thousand from the revolving loan fund, uh, and we're going to be paving, um, Union Street. And that'll probably take place, uh, next year. But we've pledged, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars towards that, that project and very similar project. We just did, uh, South Vine Street. We just finished that this, in the past ten days. It's, uh, it's all done. So we really, um, you know, appreciate, uh, the help with that project. And as you can see, if you've been down, uh, Vine Street, it's, uh, it's very nice. It goes all the way to, uh, Railroad Street. Uh, let's see, let's talk about the agenda a little bit tonight. We do have a motion to reset the public hearing for Whispering Pines property. Uh, we, we had already set it for June twenty-first. That's at our next council meeting, but, uh, we did not have the, uh, all the information in the packet ready. So we are going to, um, ask you to move that to the nineteenth, and we've already reached out and, and been working with KDC Properties and, uh, uh, Generation Properties, so. I think, you know, they'll be, they'll be fine with that. Uh, let's see, the new heater for the pool was delayed another week. As soon as it gets here, it's, it's ready to go. We're, it's, the gases, gases there, electrics there, and the water that it's going to pump is there. So, um, hopefully, any, any day, it's going to come on a truck, and we'll just set it right on that pad. I don't know if you've been down there to the pool, but we've got a new area that's, uh, blocked off, uh, inside the fence. It's very nice. And, uh, we believe this pool, this pool heater will last, uh, many years and, uh, do a much better job than the last, uh, several have done. Uh, ODOT paving projects, uh, well, actually paving projects in general. We've been on the face, um, events page or the news page for, um, columbiaohio.gov to talk about paving of East Park Avenue, Springfield Road, Heck Road, Southern Avenue, and Camelot Avenue, or Camelot Drive are, the paving part is, uh, complete, as well as South Line Street. Uh, that one's complete too. Uh, let's see, else, what else is on the agenda? We do have the local government funding distribution legislation. We do, we've been doing that, um, every year. And that's on tonight, and that's two different, uh, pieces of legislation. We do continue to monitor the gas aggregation program. As you're aware, that, uh, previous company that we were using, uh, went, filed bankruptcy. So, um, we are, everybody should be on the SEO rate for, uh, Columbia. And we are looking for a new supplier, uh, trying to get, we'll update everybody on the websites. The plan right now is to wait for a good price and lock it in by the fall. These, these rates, they change daily. As you can see, as gasoline prices, you know, change too, but, uh, gas prices do change daily, and we hope it, hope that they settle down and, um, natural gas prices settle down in August, uh, or September, and we lock something in. We do have a safety meeting, uh, for safety forces. That's EMS, fire, uh, and police, and also park for finalize the fireworks plan to, uh, make sure we have a safe event on Fourth of July. And that's, uh, scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. House Bill one-seventy-two, uh, that was passed by the state, uh, states that July first, it is legal to set off fireworks, um, privately owned property with permission during seventeen specific dates throughout the year. So people are just saying that, uh, you know, the fireworks are legal July first. They, um, there are, there's a little asterisk next to that. It's very specific. And, uh, we've been working on something. We've got a couple ordinances tonight. One is, you know, it, it is common sense that we would not want somebody to set them off on our, on our property, you know, the public property, but this is to clarify that. One of the ordinances was to clarify that. And the other one was to set a time, uh, timeframe, doubt that you want fireworks going off in town at three-thirty in the morning. You know, something that's, that's reasonable, and that's the second piece of legislation. And, and again, that's, uh, July first, that, that kicks in. The legislation that we do have actually outlines the dates that the, the state laid, laid out, uh, that, that you are allowed to, you know, set off, uh, commercial fireworks that you, you know, pick up at the store. You don't have to take them out of town or take them out of the state like we used to. Well, let's see, we opened, uh, bids for fuel and, um, lime, and those are, we're recommending the lowest bids on the, um, the lime. We, we did only get one, um, bid for the fuel, but we're, we're confident that it's a, it's a good bid. Uh, the annual housing council is meeting next week. Uh, we just look at all the commercial and industrial CRAs and, um, you know, take a look at them and make sure everybody is, uh, doing what they're supposed to do. Uh, the online auction I hear went very well. Um, I'll have the details for you in the next, uh, council packet, but, uh, I know at a truck that we, we bought in two thousand and five for maybe twenty-eight thousand, went for almost eighteen thousand, you know, while later. So, yeah, it's, uh, it was, it was, that was pretty good. Uh, let's see, the crews put up, worked with the, um, the Legion, and we put up flags along Main Street in time for the, uh, parade. Those are typically flown, uh, just until after, uh, Fourth of July, and then we try to keep some at the, uh, at the square. Chamber Commerce donated the flower baskets. Again, thank you, everybody, for, for sponsoring those. And, you know, they're, they're already looking nice, and they are being watered automatically. Uh, we worked with the Green Thumb, uh, Garden Club to plant the, uh, circle in the four corners of the square. We thank them for, um, teaming up with us to do that. Uh, let's see, the corridor, there is the water feature in the back that, uh, features a, uh, Firestone tire, um, Columbia pumps, and, uh, an end cap from, uh, Compco. And that's, uh, active. The water is actually, uh, flowing right now, so we're, we're happy, uh, to, you know, to get that checked off our box. We're not quite done, but, uh, we really appreciate working with the, uh, entrepreneur class last year and, um, you know, look forward to doing other projects with them. Let's see, we passed some holes, uh, worked on some street signs. Continue to work on the West Salem Street, uh, stormwater project along with all the paving projects. And, uh, you know, appreciate everybody, all the residents and, uh, drivers through our town with all the orange cones. I know it's been a pain, especially on the West Salem Street project. It's, it's, uh, been a long project, and, and, uh, it's coming to an end, but, uh, it's been a, it's been a long one. Uh, Water Department, we did sixty-nine locates since the last, uh, meeting. We did, uh, four employees, uh, went to a training, uh, for fire hydrants. Uh, that is the, the valves themselves. Uh, well, number six, uh, was having problems, and we've got that back online. Waste Water Department cleaned, uh, catch basins, uh, working on an inflow infiltration project. And also worked with Mudwell and, uh, Bonportable Water Systems to thank the Electric Department for helping the wastewater plan out in the last month. They've been down there for various things, whether it's, uh, pulling pumps or checking electric. So we appreciate when, uh, when the departments work together. Park and Cemetery, we did fix several leaks, uh, at the pool. There was actually a dive team that went out there and dove it before it opened and, uh, did put some sealant, uh, epoxy of, of some type. A few of the chronic issue, or the, um, yeah, but they're going to come back to, to, uh, to try to fix the chronic issues. There was a few acute that they did fix. Uh, the, so the pool is open. It's very, been very successful so far. The, uh, park staff prepared the cemetery and park for Memorial Day. And, uh, we're starting to plan. The Firestones are going to visit, uh, later this year, and we're starting to plan to do that. Electric Department, uh, we delivered some parts for commercial site. Uh, actually, there was a tree that took a hole, uh, and a service out and to work on that. And, uh, let's see, they did find a bad wire in the system that they replaced. And lastly, um, let's recognize Dylan Fletcher, uh, who is on our student, uh, one of our students representative, uh, for council. And, uh, hopefully, we have a, a way to, we have a, uh, we have a crew for next year. Okay, very good. That was our, that was our number one goal to get through those the last, last few months, so we do appreciate it. So I have.
Your Lance, any questions for Lance? Received a copy of the Building Zoning, uh, Department Report from May twenty-twenty-two. Any questions on that report? And also you received a copy of the MS Department Report also of May twenty-twenty-two. Any questions on that report? We're noticing on the bid results, they're in your packet. You see them. Uh, one bidder for, for the one, and we had two bidders for the line. And, uh, the low bidder is recommended in our ordinances tonight, so just wanted to make that point. Any questions on that matter? Anybody? You also received a copy of the bill list of six, seven, twenty-twenty-two. Questions regarding that? We have no old business, and under new business, I would like, uh, I would seek a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only. So.
Second.
Do you have me to call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to reset public hearing from June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at seven fifteen PM to July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two at seven fifteen PM. Rezone, rezone twelve-point-two-three-two-two acres of property at nine forty-seven. East Park Avenue from R-one and R-two to R-two P U D.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? Do you have me to call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Motion to approve the request from Marty Knowles to hold the annual street party event on North Elm Street on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two from four-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM.
Should I move table, table that? Till she brings in more information? Or no, that's a different one, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we got a motion. Do we get a second?
No, second.
And a second.
And I assume this involves providing the bear.
Yeah, that's all we do.
Stuff that we've done before.
Yeah, this is kind of old hat. Do you know anything about it, Chief?
Yeah, we just, we just put the, um, so that, that section of North Elm Street will be blocked off, uh, from four-thirty to seven-thirty. We'll notify the, uh, dispatch at that time. We do lay down the, um, road close signs the night before, and then they put them up for us, and they take them down.
I believe they leave a lane open if.
For fire.
For fire.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? Do you have me to call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R-dash five-nine-eight, first reading. A resolution to exclude the approval of the City of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required for an alternative. A resolution to exclude the approval of the City of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required from alternate, ultimate method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty-twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion second? Questions? Dan, we call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash five-nine-nine, first reading. A resolution approving a new al- alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty-twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Dan, we call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-seven, first reading. An ordinance amending section one ordinance number twenty dash O dash three zero-six-two establishing a wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees for the City of Columbiana.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Dan, we call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-eight, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Leiden Oil Company, three-seven-one-one Lee Harp's Road in Youngstown, Ohio, four-four-five-one-five, for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel.
So move.
Second.
Dan, we call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-nine, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Greer Lime Company, a division of Greer Industries, Inc., five ninety-eight Canyon Road, Greer Ma- Greer Mansion, Morgantown, West Virginia, two-six five zero-eight, for the purchase of lime for water, for the water treatment plant.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Dan, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-three-zero, first reading. An ordinance prohibiting the use of fireworks upon municipally-owned property and revising and amending chapter six-seven-eight of the codified ordinances of the City of Columbian, Ohio, as necessary.
So move.
Second.
Can I make some comments on both of these ordinances?
Please.
So that you understand. The general signed House, uh, General, the God, signed House Bill one-seventy-two last November. The act has varying effective dates, one of which is, or the last of which is July first of two thousand twenty-two. As Ohio law currently exists, you can purchase consumer-grade fireworks within the state of Ohio. Consumer grade are actually considered, uh, class one point four G, three G rather, fireworks. They can be purchased anywhere, but you must, within forty-eight hours, transport them out of the state of Ohio. I guess everyone realized that's really not what has happened, so the General Assembly decided to change the law. So as of July first, you'll be able to purchase the consumer-grade fireworks in the state of Ohio and set them off on your own property, on or on someone else's private property with permission. Now, the law, as it, as it was passed, allowed for opt-out provisions for municipalities, townships, counties, whoever, whatever other government entity wanted to opt out. So the opt-out provisions are basically two. One, a municipality, a township, county, can ban the discharge of fireworks outright. Or two, you may restrict the usage of fireworks. So the act provides for seventeen dates, or days rather, in the year during which consumer-grade fireworks may be discharged. So, a municipality such as Columbiana can restrict the hours on those days under the new law, or can outright ban those on any days. So outside of the seventeen days, you're not allowed to discharge consumer-grade fireworks. During the seventeen days you are, unless a governmental entity such as the city decides to opt out. So before you this evening are two separate ordinances, one of which is a complete ban on any city-owned property, period, during any days. Two, an hour restriction on any property, not just city-owned property, but private property. So for example, if you were to pass the version that is the restriction and someone decides to set off fireworks at three-thirty AM on July fourth, that would clearly be a violation of law. So you've got two options basically in front of you. Unfortunately, you can't ban it and restrict it the way the act was written, one or the other.
Does House Bill one-seventy-two actually state on private property? Okay, so that you said.
So the idea is, I suppose you could come over to my house and I could give you permission to set off consumer-grade fireworks during those seventeen days. If we restrict it, you could only do it on certain hours. Um, the law isn't real clear as far as if we can ban it outright, but actually I think you can ban it outright within the jurisdiction of the city limits of Columbiana, period. They wanna talk to Chief Myers about how that's going to be enforced. Um, a lot of municipalities are opting for a ban on city-owned property or restrict the hours, one or the other. Some aren't. Um, I know the City of Cleveland is looking at a total ban. I don't think they've passed it yet.
But right now, people are setting off fireworks anyway.
Well, right now, you know, within the state of Ohio, we've had lots of fireworks retailers and people go to those retailers and they sign a little piece of paper that says, I'm going outside of Ohio. Well, we all know that really has never happened and the General Assembly doesn't think it ever has either. That's why they finally passed House Bill one-seventy-two.
So if you banned them outright within the confines of the city, we're gonna be sitting in the same place we are right now?
Yes. The way the ordinance is written, we're banning them on city-owned property. Firestone Park Cemetery, who would want to do that? But you never know, um, anything that's owned by the city is the way that particular ordinance is drafted.
Okay, so if we, if we ba- if we ban them from city-owned property, makes sense. Can we also ban the hours for the city itself?
No. It's, if it's a ban, it's an outright ban. So the way that ordinance is written, it was basically to ban it on city-owned property. If you instruct me to write that so it's a ban on any property, we can do that.
No, it, city property is fine.
Right.
I think that's fine, but can you also restrict the times that they can do it?
No, because if it's a ban, it's a ban. Which would basically mean no hours during the Fourth of July can anybody be setting fireworks off in Firestone Park?
No, no, what it, no, what I mean is, hey, I'm just not understanding, I guess. I don't have my arms wrapped around this. You, you, we, we have something going that says you can't set it off on city-owned property.
Period.
Okay. What about the restrict, if, if, but that still allows them to set them off on private property?
Right.
Can we restrict the hours they're set up on private property?
No. The way this statute is written, I didn't vote, um, I didn't pass. It's basically written as one or the other. So it's written as you can restrict anywhere within the city, or you can ban anywhere within the city, but you can't do both. So we can't say on city-owned property, none, and then we're gonna restrict the hours on private property.
We have to basically pass one and not pass the other one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
So if you. It's our choice to figure out which we wanna do.
But you can make an argument right now that if you don't pass, if you, if you don't pass the ban, right? If you don't, we're still not gonna allow people to, I mean, cause he said private. You know, the.
If you don't pass the ban, then you're effectively going to pass a restriction which will restrict the hours that somebody can set fireworks off.
One-seventy-two specifically says you can set them off on private property.
Yeah.
So that, in my mind, already bans city property.
Well, and in fact, even, even if you consider the city owns the property, uh, someone would have to have permission from the city in order to set it off during the restricted hours on city property, I would assume.
Yeah.
I think so.
So I think we really, personal opinion is we need to just look at restricting the hours. Cause that's only one of two options.
Too. And I, I would assume that someplace like a condo association, they would have to have permission from the condo association as opposed to an individual, uh, apartment owner, whatever you call those things.
I'm sorry, set them off on the balcony.
Yeah. The only thing I would caution you against is thinking too deeply into here's how we should interpret this, because his officers are gonna have to interpret it. And we will then have lots of attorneys that decide they'll interpret this differently. More creative we are, honestly, I think the more unad heading this is gonna be.
I would think just like, you can't set fireworks after eleven-thirty at night or something, I've got them seventeen days.
Well, it's, it's, it's in that second ordinance already. The time is.
Well, that's, but that's what I'm saying, that that's, that, that's probably the ordinance we should pick and not kind of just hang it outright on property.
Yeah, I kind of agree.
You could look at it that right now you have banned, but you have to understand the intention of this act is to repeal the existing act that says transfer them out of state within forty-eight hours. And that banned it anywhere within the state of Ohio. So, you know, here's, the way this act was passed, it also includes provision that the state fire marshal was supposed to pass and come up with some rules and regulations. Well, they've set up a committee to come up with the rules and regulations, but they haven't yet. So maybe by next year, this will be a little bit clearer and there won't be as many choices as there are now. Where we are right now, ban or restrict.
Half the hours.
Restricting the hours, yes. That can be. So have we read the ordinances yet?
I, I read the first, we have a motion second on that.
Yes, we did.
Mark Chau.
Right.
So the motion and the second is on the ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash thirty-one, thirty.
Which bans the fireworks, right?
That is banning, banning.
On municipal, municipal.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's two other things there too.
Yeah.
So if we vote that one down, now, go to the next one. We're with first reading? In fact, we're second reading, line five.
Yeah, you can now vote it down because you've got a second on it, so procedurally you have to vote on it.
That's what's, yeah, we have to vote it down.
Right.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Dan, you call the roll?
So the con- the consensus of this is to, to vote down this, this one that you just read, correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right.
About your feelings, you know?
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to read through the lines because it's, it's cumbersome.
It is.
It is.
No doubt there.
Sorry.
I mean, I can't understand why you can't ban municipal property and then restrict hours, so which can't.
That's great.
But, but like you said, it's, the setting off of fireworks is on private property, so, I mean, that kind of goes without saying that it has to be private property and if it's not your own, then you have to have someone else's permission, so.
Any other comments? Dan?
Banner?
No.
Becker?
No.
Souter?
No.
McBane?
No.
Liston?
No.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-three-one, first reading. An ordinance restricting the hours during which consumer-grade fireworks may be discharged within the City of Columbiana revising and amending chapter six-seven-eight of the codified ordinances of the City of Columbian, Ohio, as necessary.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Uh, do you wanna make any points at this? We have motion second on the line.
Okay. So this is the restriction ordinance and if you look at section three, you will see the seventeen days that consumer-grade fireworks are permitted under the House Bill one-seventy-two to be discharged. Um, we've inserted the hours of seven PM until twelve-thirty AM. That is, you know, what we thought made sense if you don't, you know, we can always come back with a revision to this or an amendment to this ordinance with different hours. Uh, that's more something that I guess you need to decide.
The twelve-thirty was chosen because of on New Year's, if somebody goes out.
Yeah, okay.
I like the end, I like the end time.
You know.
The start time, you know, fireworks are great fun. But I, I'd like to see it a little earlier, you know, early afternoon, you know? I don't know. If you got kids taking a nap or something, it might upset somebody, but it's only.
Fireworks aren't really exciting unless you have some darkness.
Oh, yeah, but it's fun throwing them under somebody's chair.
Speaking from experience.
Speaking from experience, yeah.
Here goes the whole meeting.
This is recipients of the fireworks that went off on my neck. I'm not winged.
I'm not gonna ask how you got a firework on your neck.
Somebody threw it.
Any other comments on the motion?
Well, we could, you know, we could move this, like, if, for New Year's, it's dark by five-thirty at that point.
Yeah, I mean, like, like Fourth of July, it's just a lot of picnics and, you know, I, I agree that the ones that light up, but the ones that make noise, it's, I don't know.
What do you think, we're timed?
Yeah.
How about three o'clock?
You gonna make a motion?
Um, okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. We have, we got a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
This is, this is amendment to the.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend that start time to three o'clock.
I'll second that.
Motion on the amendment to change the start time to three PM. Discussion on that? Call for a vote on the amendment?
On the amendment. Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Now roll call on the ordinance as amended. Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Somebody tell me what that last holiday is, so I'm not, I don't miss it.
The Wall is in the hall.
Okay.
So does this mean you're gonna be setting off fireworks that day, Ted?
I don't wanna miss it, yeah.
Three o'clock, so we are. Don't have his wife going like this with his. Is there gonna be any business after the, okay. So we're gonna be probably going into executive session, but there won't be any matters voted on after we come back into session. So we'd like to move, move to have an opportunity for anybody sitting out there. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Anything they want to discuss? I would like to know then, not hearing anybody, would like to know if any of the council members would like to make comments?
We're waiting for you, Dan.
You know, every hit, I'll turn it over. No, no comments.
I, I would like to say that I thought the Memorial Day service was fantastic, and our Dan Becker was the master of ceremonies, did a fantastic job, and thought it was a great event, two school bands there, and, you know, I think it was a really good ser- good service, and it's good for the community, and Dan, you can really pick the weather, okay? You did a great job. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing no other comments, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for discussion of personnel matters, section one two, one point two two, G one.
So move.
Second.
Dan, we call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Second.
Dan, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So move.